It is 7:05 and we will reconvene in open session. This regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session under sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code and no action was taken. On behalf of the Board, welcome. We've got a full house tonight and we're glad you're here. As I remind you, every month, the Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. It's management that's the sole responsibility of the Superintendent and his staff. Again, want to welcome everybody. We really do appreciate your support of the Waco Public Schools. Want to welcome anybody watching at home on Channel 17 or on the website. Because we've got a big crowd, if you have a cellphone with you, if you would turn it off or silence it so we don't have any distractions as we try to quickly move through the meeting, we'd appreciate it. Yeah, Dr. Nelson, go ahead. Do we have an announcement?
Yes.
Okay.
Buenas noches, y bienvenidos a la reunión de la Junta del Distrito Escolar Independiente de Waco. Mi nombre es Grace Benson, y soy la Superintendente Asistente de Educación Primaria. Antes que comencemos la reunión, quiero ofrecerles servicios de interpretación. Si necesitan servicios de interpretación, por favor, les puedo dar un dispositivo de interpretación. Por favor, véanme, yo estaré atrás del salón con los dispositivos. Gracias, y tenga una buena noche.
I'd like to ask that you join me as we pause for a moment of silence, for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. We'll move on to Item 6, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. De Beere.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we are pleased to have two students from Parkdale Elementary School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please welcome Akuria Hamilton and Jeremiah De La Rosa McComas. I pledge allegiance...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Dr. Nelson, members of the Board, please join me in front of the dais for tonight's special recognition. We'll begin the special recognition portion of our meeting this evening with an introduction of our pledge leaders who both attend Parkdale Elementary School. Akuria Hamilton is a fifth grader at Parkdale Elementary School who says that science is her favorite subject. She enjoys basketball, music, and singing. When she grows up, Akuria wants to become a lawyer. Akuria's teacher says that she is always incredibly helpful with both the staff at Parkdale and her fellow classmates. Akuria's parents, Keisha and Brittany Norwood, have accompanied her here tonight. Would you please stand so that we can recognize you and thank you for sharing your daughter with us this evening? Jeremiah De La Rosa McComas is also a fifth grader at Parkdale and says that his favorite subjects in school are math, PE, science, and music. Jeremiah likes to read and also enjoys football, baseball, Harry Potter, Pokemon, Fortnite, Minecraft, and Robo-Blocks. When he grows up, Jeremiah wants to be an architect. Jeremiah's teacher says that he's also going to be a leader when he grows up, that he's a leader in class and goes out of his way to help other students. Jeremiah is joined this evening by his parents, Stephanie De La Rosa and Alex and Carmen McComas. Would you please stand so that we can recognize you as well and thank you for raising such a wonderful son? We also want to say thank you to our adopt-a-school partner Barnes &amp; Noble for donating the gift cards that our pledge leaders are receiving tonight. In Waco ISD, we strive to provide a quality, multifaceted education for our students, and we realize that academics is just one piece of the puzzle when it comes to building strong, well-rounded students who are ready for college, career, and beyond. It's through athletics, the fine arts, debate, career and technical education, and other special programs that many of our students find their voice, their talents, their passion, and just hone something that's going to stick with them for their life. Tonight, we're proud to recognize a group of middle school band students who recently auditioned for a spot in the Texas Music Educators Association, Region 8, All-Region Concert or Symphonic Bands. And based on their outstanding performances in their auditions, these students were selected as members of those bands. First up this evening, please join me in congratulating a group of students from Indian Spring Middle School, beginning with Mark Guerrero, Brian Guerra Samaniego, Gabriela Barra, Freddie Salazar, and Jermaine Torres. The Indian Spring Middle School Bands are led by Assistant Director Victor Boswell and the Indian Spring Director of Bands Stephanie Salazar. Up next, please join me in welcoming the outstanding musicians from Tennyson Middle School who were selected for the All-Region Bands. First, please welcome Valerie Garcia Perez, Fernanda Guerrero, Daniel Villa Gomez, Brandon Vega, Daniel Alarcon, Tyneorian Bex, and Mauricio Rivera. The Tennyson Middle School Bands are led by Assistant Director David Johnson, Assistant Director Matt Block, and the Tennyson Director of Bands Kimberly Tucker. Our last group of middle school All-Region Band members joins us from Lake Air Montessori Magnet School. Please welcome first Alana Chapa, Sophia Henderson, Daniel Angula, Archie Hatton V., Jacob Dunn, Eric De Leone, Ariana Guerra, Tenaya Weeks, Maya Lozano, Alan Rodriguez, Micah Henderson, Joshua Wheeler, Nicholas Vaccara, Max Angel, Cynthia Zavala Hicks, Jonathan Garcia, and Nicholas Ashby. The Lake Air Montessori Bands are under the direction of Assistant Director Teresa Lee and Lake Air Director of Bands Noah Alvarado. Our Fine Arts Department is led by Director Larry Carpenter. And if you're a parent of one of these outstanding musicians, I'd like to ask you to stand too so that we can thank you for sharing your student and their talents with Waco ISD. We have one more very special recognition tonight, but before we start that, I'd like to invite the trustees to return to the dais. January is School Board Recognition Month, and it's an opportunity that we value to say thank you to all of you for your incredible service to the students, the families, and the taxpayers of Waco ISD. Each year, the Texas Association of School Boards chooses a different theme for School Board Recognition Month, and this year's theme is planting the seeds of success. And it's truly fitting, in so many ways, the seeds of success for our district and our student were sown through your service. Together, the members of the Board represent more than eight decades of service on the Board of Trustees, service that has grown out of seeds as parents, as members of PTA, as concerned community members, as business leaders, as community leaders who care about the future of our schools and our kids, and we want to say thank you. Every day, your service, your volunteer effort makes a difference for our kids. But we decided it wasn't just enough for a few of us here in the room tonight to say thank you. Students and staff all across the district really wanted to express their appreciation as well, and so with the help of our television team, they were able to do just that, and we'd like to share a short video with you.
What did you say again?
I feel like I've kind of heard of it.
It means to appreciate our school and what the school board members do for this school, like give us iPads and things to learn.
Thank you for supporting our school.
I want to be a school board member just like you.
Well, the Board's done a lot for the tennis team. They helped us get new uniforms. They helped us really grow as a team.
Thank you, school board.
Thank you.
Thank you from Lake Air Montessori.
Because of your support.
My pride runs deep.
The Waco High School Mock Trial wants to thank the Waco ISD Board of Trustees for all your support.
Thanks for supporting athletics.
Football!
Thanks for supporting Trojan baseball.
A-line soccer!
Softball!
Thank you for supporting Lions tennis.
Thanks for supporting girls' basketball.
Thank you, school board, for your support of the Waco High Golf Team.
Man's soccer!
Waco High basketball!
Thank you for supporting girls' soccer.
Thank you for supporting the fine arts.
University High School Mariachi Band.
Orchestra!
Thank you, school board!
We thank you, school board!
From the art class at Waco High, we want to thank the Board for their service.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Love!
We try to.
We want to thank the Waco ISD School Board for its continued support for GW Carver, for its students and the community. Pause up.
Thank you, school board!
Thank you!
School Board, thank you for your hard work and dedication.
I want to take this opportunity to extend my heartfelt appreciation to our school board and all that they do to serve our district.
From Waco, we would like to say...
Thank you for supporting us!
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you for helping our students throughout!
Thank you for helping build my future.
For going the extra mile.
For keeping me safe.
For being awesome.
For volunteering your time.
We truly value you and appreciate you.
Thanks for all you do.
Your service and dedication here at Brook Avenue is highly appreciated.
Thank you!
Thank you for caring about us!
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 Hi, everybody. On behalf of our Cabinet and really everyone in the Waco Independent School District community, we would like to thank our Honorable Board of Trustees during Board Recognition Month. We're so appreciative of your time and your talent and your effort. We're lucky to have you, and the best is yet to come, all day, every day.
Thank you so much for what you do. A combined 84 years of volunteer service, service that's all too often thankless in many ways, but we want to say a heartfelt thank you tonight. In addition to that message, students from campuses across the district have helped our campuses bring some tokens of appreciation, many created by students that tell a story of the difference that you've made in their lives. Again, 84 years of service, that's thousands and thousands of seeds of success sown for the future of our community. It's tens of thousands of students' lives that you've touched and changed for the better, and thank you doesn't seem to begin to capture everything that's a part of that, but just one more time, from all of us, thank you for what you do for Waco ISD.
Thank you, Kyle, and all the students who put that together. We can no longer say this is a thankless job because we've been thoroughly and very well thanked. Thank you for everybody. It's a labor of love, and we enjoy what we do. The families who are here for the student recognition, you're not required to stay for the whole meeting. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, but if you'd like to excuse yourselves, this would be a good point while we transition into the next portion of our meeting. Thank you for joining us this evening. Kristi, anybody sign up? All right. No one signed up for the audience for guests. One item that we have later on the agenda is the discussion of the external audit results, and we do have an auditor from out of town here this evening. Is there any objection to taking that out of order? All right. Hearing none, we will jump down to Item 10A, Discussion and Possible Action, Discussion and Approval of the 2017-2018 External Audit. Dr. Nelson, Ms. Davis, any introduction?
I'll make a comment. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify that how much we appreciate the work of our external audit partners. They've been very thorough in their process, and I'd like to commend our Finance Department for the good news that we're about to receive. It is attention to detail that is noticed and appreciated, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Ms. Cheryl Davis, our Chief Financial Officer, along with the other members of our finance team that are here and those that are not here but work every day so hard to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars that we entrusted. Ms. Davis, you have any comments, or would you like to introduce our external auditor?
Okay. Our external auditor, Ms. Debbie Kirkham Young, is here with us tonight from the firm of Weaver, which is actually one of the... it's the largest firm in the state that does school district audits.
Ms. Kirkham Young, I hope you're not disappointed. I hope you didn't think all these people were here to hear the external audit report.
I'm quite used to it. I'm just talking about this is my third board meeting this week, so...
Are you used to everybody getting up and leaving before...
The students are the most important in the district, so they should always come for us, but thank you for allowing me to come after them.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson, members of the Board. I'd like to present to you the annual financial report result. As the projector moves over to page 19, Indemn Management's Discussion and Analysis, this year, the district had to implement GASB 75, which is, when I was talking about the academic GASB Government Accounting Standards Form, was for other post-employment benefits on page 19. And in implementing that, the district had to pick up their proportionate share of long-term...
liability for the OPEB. And this is similar to what you had to do in 2015 when you had to pick up your proportionate share of the liability of the TRS pension plan. So I just wanted to mention, when you look at page 19 and you see the comparison in 17 to 18, and you look at the instruction expenditures, and I'm just going to mention this because it's the results of OPEB, you didn't really reduce your expenditures in the fund-level financial statements. It's because in the government-wide financial statements, when you see that drop from $92 million to $63 million, and I'm just sharing this with you so if someone looks at this and they go, "What happened, Cheryl? We didn't decrease expenditures." It's not on the fund-level financial statements, which is how you budget. It's in the government-wide. And there was a unique thing that happened in the implementation of OPEB was that because the net pension liability at the beginning of the year where you had to restate it and at the end of the year created what they called a negative pension expense. And so, as accountants, we don't like, as Cheryl and I've talked, we don't like debits to revenues and credits to expenses. But the GASB did not have a implementation of a Q&amp;A of what to do when that particular situation happened. Because of the changes that they made in the benefit plan and the changes that they made in the discount rate changed that liability significantly from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So I just wanted to point that out. In general, the MDNA was always a neat thing to look at on the government-wide financial statements because you could see changes, and they had some meaning, but this year, they really don't because of that net OPEB liability offset that had to be booked. Page 29 and 30 are your government-wide financial statements, and those are the same tables that you see in the MDNA. And I always like to point out there, too, that when you look at those numbers, those are not fund balance, they're net position. Those are those fund statements that are once a year converted to a full accrual basis. So when you look at page 30, in the Statement of Activities, at the very bottom, before net position, you can see that that prior period adjustment to book that OPEB... I'm going to let him get up to page 30. It's just two more pages. That $101 million at the bottom of that page, that's the prior period adjustment to book that OPEB liability at the beginning of the year. And you can see the effect that your ending net position was in a deficit of $21 million, but that's because of that net OPEB liability. And if you back to back up a page and you said, "Well, let's just... where would we be if we didn't have to book that pension liability and the OPEB liability?" At the end of the year, the pension liability, if you back up one page, was $31 million, and your net OPEB was $57 million, so right at $90 million. So you said, "I'm in a deficit of $21 million at the end of the year, and if I added that $90 million back of those, picking up those proportionate share of pension and OPEB..." And so this is not uncommon around the state. A lot of people say, "What is TEA going to say about it?" Really, they're going to back that out in your first rating calculation, so it's not going to affect you there. It's affecting districts across the state because TRS Care is a pay-as-you-go program. It's only 0.91% funded. So that being said, I'm going to move on into the fund-level financial statements, which are the key statements that you like to look at on page 33. On page 33, the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance, the first column is the General Fund, which accounts for the general operations of the district. Total revenues for the General Fund were $141 million. Total expenditures, $141.8 million. You had some other financing sources and uses of $688,000. So overall, your fund balance decreased $808,12, which went from $44.8 million to $44.0 million. The next column is your National School Breakfast and Lunch Program, which is a major fund, which had $10 million in revenues, $9.4 in expenditures, excess of $554,000, which added to its beginning fund balance of $2.2 million, ended up with $2.8 million. The next column is your Debt Service Fund, which accounts for the collection of property taxes for the payment of your general obligation bonds. Took in $13.8 million, expenditures of $14.6 million, and a net change in fund balance, a decrease of $741,000, which brought it from $4.6 million to $3.9. And then the next column is those non-major governmental funds, and in the back part of your report are some combining statements, but those are like your Title I Special Ed Foods, Nutr food service, and campus activities, and all of those funds that don't qualify as a major, they're not large enough, so they're aggregated into one column. Brought in $20 million in revenues, $21 million in expenditures, other financing sources of $735,000, and then an overall increase from 1.3, a decrease of 1.3 to 1.0 million. The next thing that I think is, is the notes to the financial statements, and probably the most important footnote is on about page 60, and that is your long-term liabilities. And in the middle of the page of long-term liabilities, I like that table in the middle of the page because it's kind of a snippet of what all your long-term liabilities consist of. So page 60, the middle table, your general obligation bonds, you can see had an ending balance of $155 million. It was $159 million at the beginning of the year. Your lease revenue bonds have an ending balance of $670,000. You have some premiums that haven't been amortized out, will be amortized over the life of those bonds, and the accumulated accretion for the capital appreciation bonds. So your total bonds payable were $175 million at the end of the year. You have some good claims outstanding, net pension liability and that net OPEB liability that we talked about previously. And the following pages are just greater breakdowns of what issues make the different tables. On page 61, break down the bonds payable by individual issues. Breaks down the principal and interest due each year. Then there's also a category on the following page of pages about your net pension liability and the net OPEB liability. But to me, the easiest place to look at your net pension and net OPEB liability is in the Required Supplemental Financial Statements, and those are on page 82. I'm sorry, that's page 84. On page 84, I like to point out that page because I think it's important to employees as well as school board, because to me, that bottom-line number is how well is the TRS plan funded? And of course, their comprehensive annual financial report is on their internet, but I think this is just a good summary of each year how well the plan is funded. So you can see, back in 2015, it was 83%, went down to 78.4%, then 78% and 82.17%. And then I think the next... And then I think the next page where it's saying, what are your contractually required contributions on page eighty-five? And I think that's important because a lot of sometimes people that are not accountants, they might say, "Why do we owe, have a liability for pension, and why do we have a liability for OPEB? Aren't we paying in what we're supposed to pay?" And the district is paying everything legislatively they're required to pay in on pension and in OPEB. And you can see on page eighty-five, you were contractually required to pay in three point one million, and the district paid in the three point one million. It's sometimes like I, the only analogy that I can come up with is something like sometimes social security, people are paying into the system now, but there's, the benefit may be greater than what those contributions are, or maybe the investment earnings back in two thousand and eight, we know that caused the TRS plan to have a drop. On page eighty-six and eighty-seven, you see the OPEB plan, and there's only one year presented. The schedule will continually to grow till there's ten years of data. And again, on the plan fiduciary net position as a percentage of the notable OPEB liability, you can see here it's only point nine-one percent. And that goes along with what I was saying earlier, it's a pay-as-you-go plan. The legislature never intended for members in the district to fund it like a pension plan, similar to a 401K. They're just paying in legislatively each year what it's, what they believe that it's going to be required to meet the needs of those claims. And page eighty-seven is where the district was legislatively contractually required to pay in eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and that's what the district paid in. To me, the next important page is the summary of findings and question cost, which is on page one nineteen. And the reason I say that it's a, it's a good summary rather than all those independent auditors' reports, trying to read those and see what they say, this just summarizes it all up into one snippet of a page. And I think it's important because T E A gets information from Cheryl and Pym's data. They get also an audit report. She sends it as an ASCII file of the audit report. She sends in a PDF copy of the audit report. And what they want to know is when they get all of that data and they're using all that data to make calculations, can they rely upon that data? And what they want to know is what type of auditor's results. And the district received an unmodified opinion, that's the clean opinion, it's the highest level of assurance that you can receive that your financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The other key thing is internal controls over financial reporting. There were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no non-compliance. And I'm on page one nineteen there, I see it. Also, the federal awards, because you receive more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding, you're required to have a single audit also. And in regards to the single audit, you also received a clean, unmodified opinion. The federal program we tested this year was a child nutrition cluster. There were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no non-compliance. And my thanks, too, also, as I wrap up the report, I just want to, special thanks to Cheryl Davis and all of her staff and the child nutrition group, because I know as auditors, she gets emails of what we would like before we get in and a planning checklist. She uploads a lot of data to the portal, so we already have it. Before we get here, we're making selections, payroll, expenditures, journal entries. She's getting all of that together for us and uploading some information, and she's always well-prepared for us and also at year-end. Just appreciate all the courtesies and professionalism that department responds to us, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have in regards to the audit report.
Any questions from the board? The schedule, the summary schedule on page one nineteen has probably been there in prior years, and I just hadn't noticed it. And that was very helpful to be able to have one page that summarized that there were no material findings and it was an unmodified opinion. So thank you for including that. That made getting through it much easier.
Yes, it's much, it's much easier to go flip over and look at that one page, what's the summary of everything, rather than trying to read the letters and interpret what those are. So, thank you.
And Ms. Davis, to you and your department, I think we get the unmodified opinion, year in, year out, and we almost take it for granted, but we do want to thank you and your department's work for attending to the dollars and allowing us to almost expect to get this type of report every year, and so congratulations.
You should expect this kind of report every year.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Sykes?
Real quick, I want to make sure, just as a point of clarification. So we're paying in what's statutorily required to the pension plan, right?
Yes.
So is the term, we have an unfunded liability, correct? And is that unfunded liability, even though we're paying in what's statutorily required, is that unfunded liability gap widening or getting larger?
Well, I would, I would think the liability is going to continue as, is to continue to grow because the employment base, the raises and that take place and the benefits, people are, that that liability is going to continue to grow. But the liability, the way it's calculated is based on the district's contributions. So they take all the school districts in the state of Texas and they say this is how, and it's reevaluated every year, what percent of that proportionate share of liability that you get. So the state auditor's office, TRS hires an actuary, they look at all the contributions of all the school districts throughout the state, plus universities and junior colleges that are in the TRS plan, medical schools, and then they give them all a percent based on contributions. So as the district continues to grow in your percentage to the total of everyone, that liability of what proportionate share that you're going to receive. Now, is if investment earnings increase, that's where you're going? And there is a table in the report that, under the, in the notes to the financial statement, and it kind of gives a contingency, if, if the rates, the discount rate went down one percent, then that liability is going to go higher. If the rates go up one percent, then that, the discount rate goes up, then the liability drops. And they're taking into consideration what's the investments, but if the investments continue to improve, and we know there's been lots of changes in that TRS is charging a lot of surcharges, they're requiring the districts to pay on the new employees, the young ones that are coming on, the teachers have to be paid until a longer time. And so they made changes. I mean, I thought that percentage would have increased a little bit more as those changes, but I think, I mean, my understanding was back in with the Enron, they lost a lot. In two thousand and eight, they lost a lot. And so those are some of the things that I hear, I mean, that I'm not, I really don't go over, I look at their CAFR to get all the information and the state auditor's report to get in here, but I'm not sure, you know, what they're investing in, but their CAFRs are online.
Well, certainly, market volatility is a concern.
And I do think the legislature is also doing some things to try to help us out. Part of what we saw with that, the negative for the TRS CARE, that OPEB liability, was because the legislator, legislature put a lot of money into TRS CARE this past year, and that was kind of that reversal. There's already a bill, I think three seventy-three, that's been filed by House Bill to increase the TRS pension rates for next year. The individual rates based on that bill would go from six point eight percent contribution to seven point seven, and then they're building in an annual increment on that. And then we pay this little entity piece that they tried to fix it with a few years ago that was one point five, it's going to one point six. And then the six point eight state contribution is going up to seven percent, would go up to seven percent, and all of those have some incremental amounts for the out years in them. So that's another way, they're trying to fund that pension liability.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll move back up. No one signed up for audience for guests, is that correct? Consent agenda, item nine, I've not been asked to pull anything. Does anybody need anything pulled? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Thank you, Ms. Sykes, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordaway. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, consent agenda is adopted. We'll move down to item eleven, reports and discussions, reports on class size exemptions. Dr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page fifty-seven of your packet, you have what statute requires us to present to this board. Because we're a district of innovation, we're happy to report we're in full compliance. We do have a couple of classes that are over the twenty-two to one, but we've examined each case on a case-by-case basis, and we will continue to monitor that to make sure we alleviate any twenty-two to one exemptions that we need to request. So we'll entertain any questions that does not require action. So we just wanted to present it, which will keep us in compliance with the statute.
Dr. Nelson, three campuses that are listed are the only ones that have any, any exceptions above the twenty-two to one.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments from the board? All right, thanks, sir. We'll move on to item eleven B, our presentation and discussion on the Lone Star Governance Continuous Improvement Model. Tonight, we're looking at goal progress measures two point two and two point three. Dr. McClanahan.
Good evening, board. So tonight, our goal progress measure is looking at the first semester dual credit completion. And we split, when we redid the goal progress measures, we looked at them individually, academic dual credit and our workforce dual credit or technical dual credit. So if you will look at the first chart that I gave you in the board item. Do I go to my board item? It should be the next one.
Like, two more pages. Three more pages.
All right. So the first chart there shows the number of successful students successfully completing dual credit courses for the fall semester. And this year, for the fall semester, we set another record of students participating in dual credit. So for the fall, we had five hundred and twelve students in the district that successfully completed at least one course. You'll see I split it down by workforce, which is the gray bar, and orange is the academic bar, because this year, TSTC, after undergoing a number of transformations on their campus, changed the way that the technical dual credit is being offered at Guam. What was happening previously is they were taking one semester welding class and spreading that one class over a whole year. And when they went to a statewide system, they decided that they wanted all of the TSTC branches statewide offering dual credit in the same way. So now, the students at Guam take a semester course in a semester, just like the kids taking academic dual credit through MCC. And so this year, we now have a gray bar on there of seventy-four students who successfully completed technical dual credit courses, whereas we've not had that in the past because they wouldn't get a grade until the end of the year. So with that, we were sitting at five hundred and twelve, which is a sixteen percent increase over last year and a thirty-three percent increase over the year before. If you look at the next chart on the next page, this is the number of dual credit courses that were successfully completed. And this year, again, we have a record for the fall semester of eight hundred and sixty-three courses successfully completed. Again, you now have that gray bar for the workforce courses that we'll be able to track from now on. In addition to that, we had seven hundred and eighty-nine academic dual credit courses completed successfully, which works out to be about one point eight classes per student. And that is an increase over the previous two years, but probably the best thing about that is that we increased our A rate, our rate of students getting As by four percent, and we decreased our failing rate by one percent. We do still have about a ninety-four percent pass rate. Those fifty-six Fs there, twenty-two of those Fs came from that welding class, because once we took it from a year to a semester, the pace really picked up and we saw that we had students that really struggled to keep up with that course. So Ms. McKeethen, Dr. McCall and I met, and one of the things that we are looking at doing is revamping the sequence for welding a little bit and making the sophomore welding courses or that first welding course a non-dual credit course to get the students ready so that they can go into the weld, that semester-long dual credit welding course the following year. Our other course that our students seem to struggle with this semester was the Business Computer Information Systems course, which is a course that's completely online, and that one, we're really looking at beefing up our oversight of the students that are in that course to make sure that they're hitting the deadlines, make sure that the students are really understanding what they're supposed to be doing in the course to ensure that they're going to be able to pass that class. But we, overall, we were really excited at the number of students in classes that were successfully completed and the fact that the number of As in those classes increased.
Thank Dr. McClanahan. Are there questions from the board? Scott, I did have one question. When you take out the workforce classes and look just at the academic, the enrollment from fall twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen is leveled off.
Yeah, pretty steady.
I know the first two or three years after the TRE, it was growing at such a rate that there was some concern about sustainability. What happens if it keeps growing at that rate?
Right.
As you look at the numbers forward and the kids coming through, do you anticipate that we have probably?
I don't think we're going to get any huge jumps like we were seeing. I think that we might have small jumps, like from, when we look at the number of classes from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen in the fall, we actually increased the number of classes per student from one point seven eight to one point eight. So the students are taking, the students that are taking it are taking advantage by taking more classes, but I think that we're getting to that, that point where we're going to start to level off.
Okay. That's, in terms, from a sustainability budget standpoint, I did know that we can now better predict what we look, what the enrollment will look like moving forward. Thank you. Other questions from the board? All right, thank Dr. McClanahan.
Thank you.
I did overlook doing one important item, and that is actually approving the audit that was presented. So we will, I will entertain a motion to approve and accept the audit report.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the annual financial report for fiscal year ended August thirty-first, twenty eighteen, as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes, is there a second? Mr. Dupuy. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Nelson, for that catch. We'll move on, I believe, to announcements. Mr. DeBeere.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Just a couple things to highlight from now to our next board meeting in February. The first is a deadline at five PM tomorrow for families that are interested in participating in the lottery to enroll at either of our magnet school programs, Lake Air Montessori School or Hillcrest PDS, to submit those applications. Families can do that online at wacoisd.org/magnetapp, that's slash magnet A P P. Then on January twenty-sixth, we'll have our elementary academic U I L and academic U I L awards ceremonies. The following Saturday, on February second, we have our middle school event. Then the Saturday after that, it's a busy stretch of Saturdays. We have a very special family engagement summit that's coming up at Bell's Hill Elementary School. We're really excited to bring our parents, to bring people from across the district together, to talk about how families can become engaged in their children's learning, and really to listen and hear from parents about how they want to be engaged and what's important to them. So we're going to have, I think, some great community presentations at this. We're also going to have an excellent panel of parents from across the district, along with free breakfast, free lunch, some free books. So it should be a really engaging, really nice Saturday morning from eight AM to about twelve-thirty. Then on February fifteenth, at five PM, we have the filing deadline for the May fourth, two thousand and nineteen trustee election. And on February twenty-sixth, our friends at Transformation Waco will be holding their monthly meeting at five-thirty PM at their offices. So it's a busy stretch from now until then. A lot of things we're excited about, but in particular, we're really excited about the family engagement summit and hope that you'll join us there.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add to Mr. DeBeere's announcements. First of all, I wanted to recognize our child nutrition program for putting together an outstanding outstanding fundraiser for our Pack of Hope. It was in conjunction with Papa Rolos Pizza. And I wanted to thank Mr. Cliff and the entire team. I was able to get over there after our Transformation Waco board meeting and want to say thank you for all you do for Pack of Hope. Also, it's been absolutely heartwarming to participate in the city of Waco's Martin Luther King events, from the parade to the candlelight ceremony, various luncheons in Reef Lane, and the, the life and the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is definitely alive and well in McLennan County, and I just wanted to applaud everyone. Our students brought home countless numbers of medals in the art contest, and I was honored to be there on Saturday to celebrate with our kids as they won those, those various awards. Last thing that is certainly not least, last week, our entire country celebrated National Law Enforcement Day. And if you know, we have one of the finest police departments in this state, and the men and women who serve in this department are selfless and valiant, and I just wanted to commend Chief Williams and his entire team and publicly thank them as we celebrate National Law Enforcement Day last week. I appreciate their unyielding service. That's it, Mr. President.
Any other announcements from the dais?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Manning.
First night Methodist Church, nine-thirty, Sunday morning.
Nine-thirty, Sunday morning.
All right. With that, it looks like seven-fifty-five, we will stand adjourned.